I'm going to call to order July 15th, 2025 Kalamazoo County Board of Commissioners Committee as a whole. First item on our agenda is the roll call. Clerk, will you please call our roll?
Commissioner Morales. Commissioner Ray.
Here.
Chair Strips.
Here.
Vice Chair Taylor.
Here.
Commissioner Wheeler.
Here.
Commissioner Dloo.
Here.
Commissioner Gussler.
Here.
Vice Chair Pro Tim Hepler.
Here.
Commissioner Mazer. We have seven present.
Thank you, and we did hear from Commissioner Mazer, who will not be with us this evening, and then Commissioner Morales, I think, will be joining us for her later session. Go to item two on the agenda, which is the opportunity for public comment. Public comment can be made in person here at the podium or by phone if you're attending virtually. You'll call 855-925-2801 and enter meeting code 10748, and then press star three to join the speaker queue. Callers may request to join the speaker queue anytime before the final public comment period ends. You'll be permitted to speak during the specific public comment session which you requested to join. Speakers will be recognized in the order their requests are received. Please, when you join us, give us your name and where you're from. You have up to three minutes to address the board on any topic. If anybody wishing to make public comment, please come and join us. You'll see a button at the podium with a person on it, on the mic there. You press that. There you go. You got it.
Good afternoon. I just wanted to stop in and say hello. I was upstairs. I am Bill Hendrian. I am a district director for MSU Extension. I've been a district director since 2018. I've been with Extension since 2014, and I have the privilege of serving as an interim while Kai has been taking a role in another county, Kai Grider. So I'm going to be serving for probably, I would guess, the next six months or so. So I just wanted to pop in and say hello. I actually live in Caledonia, so it's not that much of a stretch to sit down the highway here, so I'm glad to see all of you.
Good, thank you so much. Is there anybody else wishing to make public comment? Please come. You're welcome.
Is that better?
Hello.
Hello. Good afternoon, County Board of Commissioners. My name is Chandra Kinney, and I'm honored to present myself as the district manager of the Kalamazoo Conservation District. For those of you who are unfamiliar with our work, we are your local non-regulatory agency dedicated to protecting Kalamazoo County's natural resources through building partnerships, community education, technical assistance, cost share availabilities, and on-the-ground conservation projects. Today, I am here first and foremost to express my profound gratitude to the board and Kalamazoo County for your recent release of the Community Grant Program for local organizations in these challenging economic times for nonprofits. It's good to know that our local county is really looking out for small community organizations like ours. We truly appreciate this funding opportunity, which will directly support the expansion of our community resource capabilities and outreach. So I look forward to getting to know all of you a little bit more as I progress through my role, and again, thank you for this funding opportunity.
Thank you, Ms. Kinney. Is there anyone else wishing to make public comment? Seeing no one in chambers, Deana, do we have anyone online?
Chair, we do not have anybody online.
Thank you. All right, we will move forward from public comment. To item three, we're going to review accounts payable and payroll dispersments. Filling in for Finance Director post this evening will be our esteemed Administrator, Dr. Catlin. Do we have any questions?
Chair, all right. Well, thank you, Chair. I appreciate it. So Vice Chair, Vice Chair Pro Tim, Commissioners, this evening, we have an accounts payable claims list totaling $5,531,872.67. Of this total, the Board of Commissioners has asked to approve a claims list totaling $5,312,301.85. And then we also have payroll dispersments totaling $4,348,520.80 presented for the July 3rd general and July 15th elected payrolls.
Thank you, Administrator. Do we have any questions from Commissioners? All right, smooth sailing so far. Let's go on to our monthly financial report. Also filling in will be Administrator Catlin.
All right, thank you, Chair. So this evening, as of June, we are halfway through the fiscal year, and so the county's general fund revenues and expenditures are generally tracking as expected with some seasonal timing-related variances noted across the function. So I'll give you just a brief narrative summary. I won't go through the whole thing, but happy to answer any questions. So through June 30th, 2025, revenue collections total 18.7 million or 19.92% of the amended budget. Expenditures stand at $48,500,000, representing 51.63% of the budget appropriations, and these trends are consistent with historical patterns due to the seasonal timing of property tax collections, which are primarily received in Q3, Q4. Revenue highlights, so investment income continues to outperform expectations, and so that's a good thing within the Treasurer's Office. They're generating $3.6 million, surpassing the annual budget by $826,700 this year already. And so property tax collections remain low at 0.53% year-to-date as expected with the bulk of those revenues anticipated later in the year. The county has also recognized $750,000, well over $750,000 in disaster relief funding from the Michigan State Police with regard to the May 2024 tornado, so that's just another highlight. We also had received unbudgeted emergency management grant funding in the amount of $18,259 from the Michigan State Police, reflecting an improved coordination under new administrative structure. And then previously generated funds totaling approximately $627,000 have been allocated for various priorities, including surrogate court contract defense for juveniles, YWCA Health Reproductive Fund, and then some IT training among other highlights there. Expenditure highlights, so personnel costs represent 46.15% of this year's general payrolls, aligning closely with the calendar year midpoint. Transfers out account for 83.9% of funds expended for that budget, reflecting completed transfers to support essential operations such as Friend of the Court, the Health Fund, the Childcare Fund, capital projects, and then our self-insurance through MMRA. And then most operational departments remain within the expected spending levels, generally between 38 and 48%, with some lower utilization due to program timing. So that could be just how they deliver programs and the timing associated with those throughout the year. Some of the key takeaways is that obviously the county remains in a financial stable position, and revenues are expected to accelerate significantly in Q3 as property tax receipts are booked. Expenditures are closely managed and aligned with the historical trends, and then strategic issues, excuse me, strategic uses of prior-year funds and strong investment returns are helping offset timing delays in our tax revenue collections. And we shared kind of a, through our budget process, a schedule related to that, so we'll kind of refresh everyone's memory on that during the budget retreat as well. So happy to answer any questions and take any of the feedback back to the Finance Department so we can report out better as we move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator. Have questions? Vice Chair.
Just a couple of questions and comments. Mostly, these comments are meant for this board, us sitting around here. As we go through the budget cycle next year, we're seeing, this is very similar to what it was in 2024 and 2023 with expenditures and revenue. The revenue doesn't come in until the end of the year. Our expenditures are between, as Kevin, Dr. Catlin had said, between 38 and 42%. About halfway through the year, we're about $2 million, $1,008, under our expenditures on our personnel side. That's going to show that we're going to underspend on the personnel side about $3 to $4 million by the end of the year. Our expenditures, other than personnel, look to be pretty close. Our revenues, we just heard that, especially in the investment income, are far exceeding what we had originally budgeted. And so I guess my comment to this board is, this is the third year in a row this has happened. We need to be cognizant of this and not approve positions that haven't been filled in two or three years, because that's what's getting our expenditure side. That's why we have this carryover each and every single year, because we have some positions that have not been filled in two and three years. And quite frankly, I don't know if I'm going to be voting in favor of any positions that don't have a JDQ written on it, and they're not ready to hire on day one, on January 1st. On the revenue side, I think Tyler and the Treasurers of Thomas and the Treasurer's Office has been doing an exceptional job in investment, and I had a quick conversation with Dr. Catlin about this, and I think he is in agreement with this. But I think we need to plan our budgeting and be more aggressive in the budgeting process with that investment income, maybe similar to how we did with the property taxes, where we said we'd get five and a half, but when it really came in at seven, we used that extra point and a half for capital improvement purchases, so they weren't tied into people's salaries. Something like that for one-time costs, I think, makes sense to be more aggressive in the budgeting process, especially when we look towards investment income. But those are my two cents. I really appreciate this report. Please pass on to Finance. I've been comparing it to '24 and '23, just to kind of see how we're doing. And the expenditure side and the personnel, I think, are inching closer and closer and closer, and we're getting a little bit better each and every single year, and I'd like to continue that trend during this next budget process. Thanks.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I look forward to our upcoming budget sessions and really thinking about how to be strategic with the resources that we have, I think prioritizing the stability and well-being of our workforce, our retirees, our important components for us to consider, and we certainly have a number of large and important projects we have on the horizon as well. So thank you to the whole finance team, and our trends are becoming more clear as we've had our software all for the last several years. We can see things much more clearly, and that helps us to be more mindful in our planning. So thank you. All right, I'm going to move us forward. Next is our monthly investment report. We'll hear from our Chief Deputy Treasurer, Tyler White. Welcome, Tyler.
As of June 30th, the county's investment portfolio has a par value balance of $148,370,353.41 and a market value of $147,820,241.06, which leaves a mark-to-market variance between par value and market value of $550,112,35. That's an improvement from May of $444,447.86. But as a reminder, the improvement in the mark-to-market variance, the mark-to-market variance itself, only impacts the county's bottom line if we were to liquidate our portfolio. As I say every month, please don't. For the month of June, our portfolio earned $589,735.28 on an average daily balance of $151,226,40.8. It's an effective rate of return on the county's investments of 4.74%. It's inclusive of all of our realized gains and losses on sales maturities, as well as amortization of investment premiums and discounts. Of the $589,000 that we earned, $353,424.68 relates to general fund and budget stabilization investment pools. And for the year, our portfolio has earned $3,750,443.21 on an average daily balance of $168,345,948.29. It's an effective rate of return on the county's investments of 4.49%. Like the monthly reporting, it's inclusive of all amortization, realized gains, losses, discounts. Of the $3.75 million we've earned for the year so far, $2,337,103 relates to the general fund and $33,740 relates to the budget stabilization investment pools. So if we assume the rest of the year follows a similar trend, we're on track to earn between $7.4 and $7.5 million for the year. Inflation data came out this morning. Inflation over the last 12 months as of June was 2.7%, so it's up from 2.4% in May, according to Bureau of Labor and Statistics. Our 4.74% rate of return for the month, it's higher than inflation. We experienced a net gain in purchasing power of over 4%. And June's inflation was spread across the following categories. Food is up 3%. Energy commodities or fuel is down 7.9%. Energy services for utilities are up 7.5%, of which electricity is up 5.8%, gases up 14.2%, shelters up 3.8%, transportation services up 3.4%, medical services up 3.4%, and other commodities, including vehicles, apparel, and medical commodities, are up 0.7%. Note that I would like to make, Dr. Catlin and I had some conversations earlier this month about the drawdown in investments. I want to remind that this is a normal cycle because we're not collecting property taxes essentially from the end of February all the way to the latter half of July. We start drawing down on our investments. We use that surplus to pay for our expenses, and then we refill the investment portfolio as we go, as we're starting to get property tax collections again. This is normal, and with our marginal investment, it looks more pronounced than the past couple of years, but that's because we're putting more of our dollars into our investment portfolio. We believe the returns bear that out, but just wanted to keep that in mind because I know that question had come up. I'm happy to take any other questions, any way I can help.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, we have questions. Vice Chair. Thank you.
Great job. 4.74% in month of June. I don't know of any other people that are treasurer's offices in the state that are getting that kind of percentage. Kudos, great job. I say this all the time, where we've are to where we are now, this is generating millions of dollars, saving the taxpayers millions of dollars. So thank you very much. I did have one quick question on the money market accounts. You got roughly 3.3 in the money market accounts, but bears very little to no interest. It's only like 2% of your portfolio. I understand the need for liquidity, but wouldn't you get that same liquidity from pooled funds?
That's actually an error with our investment reporting software. Because the money market funds, that rate is flexible. As far as the investment reports are concerned, it has no percentage to give. It's trying to calculate off of, well, this is what I'm actually entering as real earnings from our different statements that we have. So that percentage earning isn't accurate, and I don't actually know how to get that here, but if you want, I could always calculate out that using some Excel math.
You do enough. Thank you.
Yeah, recommended was the abacus by Commissioner Gussler. Thank you, Chief Deputy Treasurer. Appreciate your work, the success that your office continues to make on behalf of Kalamazoo County. Thank you. All right, we'll move to item six. Other items, the first is our Maple Hill Leaseholds LLC. We have a brownfield plan presentation. Welcome.
Hi. I'll go ahead and give Deana a second there to pull up our slides. My name is Macy Walters. I'm here on behalf of the Kalamazoo County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority to present a brownfield plan in Oshmo Township that we're calling the Maple Hill Leaseholds LLC. The former Westside Medical Building was purchased by Maple Hill Auto Group to be redeveloped into a Subaru dealership. I do have members of the development team here as well. I have Jim Vandenberg back here, as well as Teresa Searls, the consultant who wrote the brownfield plan. I'll go ahead and get through my brief presentation, and then at the end, if you'd like, Jim the opportunity to come up here and speak. He has some additional things that he may like to share, and would be happy to answer questions at the end as well. In addition to this PowerPoint, I did provide a memo to the board that details all of the tax increment revenue capture, as well as just the metrics of the plan. And then I do have the actual brownfield plan itself in your packets as well, handy here to reference if you guys have any specific questions at the end related to those two. Without further ado, I'll go ahead and start the presentation here. So this is located at 6565 West Main Street in Kalamazoo. It is just a single parcel of a functionally obsolete structure in Oshmo Township, the former Westside Medical Facility. Go ahead and move to the next slide, please, Deana. Thank you. So in total, it's about 11.14 acres that'll be redeveloped. We're excited about this because this is an opportunity to reduce sprawl in Kalamazoo County, so we're always happy to see a building that's been functionally obsolete be able to be redeveloped into something that rolls back into the tax base that we can increase the taxable value on. I already said that it was the former Westside Medical Building, but that's provided here for you as well. The redevelopment will result in about a 49,000-square-foot redeveloped space. This is actually an expansion of a local business. They are not going to abandon their current facility that they're at. This is a true expansion, so they will still be operating at the site that they have been operating on, and they're going to split up and have just Subaru-specific over in this new development. So again, it's always encouraging to see when a business does not abandon a site and create a new brownfield when they go to redevelop another site, something that we're proud to talk about today. So this will expand the tax base, not only through the taxable value, but by also increasing jobs in the local community and by retaining about 170 jobs with the company itself. But 31 full-time jobs are estimated to be created with this redevelopment, and anytime there's a job creation, these are things that we do include in our annual reports to the state, and these are jobs in our local community here. The addresses must be in our local community. And so construction for this will commence in 2025, so around now, and it's estimated to be completed in about 18 months, so a pretty short redevelopment window here. We're anticipating the end of 2026 as when that will be completed, and about $12 million of private investment is going to be focused on this site here. So again, another favorable thing for us to see in the community is somebody spending their own dollars to help leverage some tax dollars locally as well. If you wouldn't mind moving to the next slide? Thank you. So these next three slides are going to be a breakup of the site plan that's provided in the brownfield plan. I wanted to focus on these a little bit so you can see them. It's kind of a large site plan design, so it could be difficult to see just on the slideshow here. As you can see, this comes right off, I believe that's the south side of West Main down there, and they're going to have the addition of a showroom as well as some office space in there. To the west of the development side is going to be some community pathways, and in addition to that, I'll allow the developer to discuss the community benefits of this project when we get to the end. I'm here just to speak on the redevelopment aspect here. And so, Deana, if you wouldn't mind going to the next slide? Thank you. So this does show the structure of the site that is going to be redeveloped here. There is a little bit of the building that can still be used, but ultimately, there is significant demolition that did need to occur due to the former medical facility having, you know, lead-lined walls and things like that. So there is some significant demolition that did have to occur with this property. And then you see that large parking area space. That's what they call the bullpen area, and that's where they'll have the cars available for clients to walk around and view. Excuse me. And then still to the west there, you can see that there is a walking path kind of sketched out there for you to be able to see. And so the idea is that in addition to creating this redeveloped space, there's going to be a nice community space that helps flow into this. This is not just going to be only for resales of cars. It's going to include the whole community, and we're excited to talk about that a little bit more at the end. Next slide, please. This is just put in here for reference. There's actually a current tenant in a portion of the property, and the development team is going to have that development continue. So this is pretty much just here for reference. I didn't want to leave it out of the discussion here since it is technically included on the site plan, so that tenant will remain there. Next slide, please, Deana. Thank you. So I always like to go through the description of costs to be paid with tax increment revenue. So the developer on this site is going to have a little over $900,000 worth of eligible expenses related to redevelopment. Although this is a local plan, there are a little bit of state taxes captured for this. It is just the statutorily allowed eligible activities, and so that would be some environmental due diligence, some hazardous material surveys, and some site demolition as well. I do always like to say that anytime there is state taxes collected on a brownfield site, it is different than your usual TIF or special assessment districts. The school operating, that is something that is kind of reimbursed to the schools. The per pupil funding is not impacted for the local school districts, and so that is something that is unique to brownfield plans. So I always like to reference that because when you see $128,000 of state taxes, you want to make sure that that's not being taken away from the schools. That is something the schools will still be able to receive through the state of Michigan. And then we also have to pay a state education tax payment as well to the state brownfield site, and so that's another expense that does come out of those state tax captures that we have. So of local taxes, though, this developer is eligible to receive just under $800,000. And again, that is broken out in the memo here if you guys would like to be able to take a look at local villages, county villages, and the associated. So the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority is allowed to capture some admin fees for this. We model all of our plans at about 10% of the total TIF received each year. Admittedly, that usually we do not capture that amount or charge that amount for our admin expenses. We only charge our actual expenses incurred, and so we do break this up between all of our brownfield plans, and currently, we have 16 active plans. So just to give you an idea, I think our max eligible expenses per year are $225,000 a year. We can't spend more than that, so that is broken up between about 16 plans. We do, of course, have our local brownfield revolving fund that we are allowed to support projects out of that is separate from our admin balance that we track. That's a separate fund. Another fund that we like to talk about, though, because it does support economic development throughout the county, and this brownfield plan does contribute to the local brownfield revolving fund, so we'll be able to leverage these tax dollars into more economic development projects in the community. And then, oh, you're all right, Deana. That was, okay, thank you. I do want to just mention the amount that is going to be paid to the State of Michigan Brownfield Redevelopment Fund. It is half of that set capture, and so it's about $21,000 is what we'll have to pay into the state of Michigan for that fund. Thank you, Deana. Estimated outcomes here, $12 million in private investment right here in the local community on a functionally obsolete space, so that is something that we're proud of. The addition of 31 new full-time jobs and then 170 retained jobs locally. The taxable value of this property is going to increase significantly. It's going to go from about $1.5 million to about $3.9 after the redevelopment. So of course, the taxable value is likely to increase beyond that in additional years of the plan. This is a conservative estimate, and this is based on the 2024 tax rates just due to when this plan was written and when it may be approved. The total length of this plan is shorter than what is allowed by state statute. It's 19 years, with the last five of those 19 years capturing into the LBRF. So it's estimated year 14 to 16 is about when the developer will be fully reimbursed and will begin to start capturing into our local fund for that. So we do like to see shorter plans, you know, when it's appropriate, because that just gets these additional tax dollars back into the community a little bit faster. And I'll remind the board that the local community does not lose any capture of their current villages that they are making now. They do continue to receive revenue on the current taxable value of the property, and it is just the increment that the taxable value increases that we capture these taxes on. So in 19 years, the local taxing jurisdictions will see a nice increase in what they're able to receive off of this property. The local brownfield revolving fund is a little over $400,000, and again, this is the fund that we are limited in what we're allowed to fund out of this. This is something that is allowable by the brownfield statute, so the brownfield authority does have, has to spend things on eligible activities, and so I'd be happy to answer questions on those now or later as they come, if anybody was curious to know what we're allowed to spend our money on for the LBRF. So another thing to consider is that the local unit of government that this redevelopment project is occurring in is in Oshmo Township, and Oshmo Township has recently project is occurring in is in Ashtemo Township, and Ashtemo Township has recently passed a Brownfields policy. And this project does meet three, kind of four, of the local township's BRA goals. And so this is one where they're increasing the taxable in the community by over $1 million. They're using a functionally obsolete structure. They're also increasing jobs, and they are planning on using energy efficient designs throughout the whole development of this. I don't have the job bit in there, but there are technically about four of the township goals that they have for this one. So it's always nice to see that the developers have considered the local units, you know, goals and when it's related to brownfield and redevelopment of these projects. And I did already touch on this earlier, but about $21,000 will be going to the State of Michigan Brownfield Redevelopment Fund, half of that set capture. Thank you, Dina. Wow, I went through that really fast. I should have timed myself. So the timeline for Brownfield Plan consideration, the local BRA, the Kalamazoo County Brownfield Redevelopment Authority, did vote to recommend the plan on June 26th, so it has already gone through third-party review, and this plan is considered final. As you see it today, there would be no changes. So that was approved by the BRA, and then on July 8th, I presented the same presentation to Ashtemo Township, and on that day, they did adopt a resolution in support of the plan as well, showing local support for this tax capture. Here we are today on July 15th. I'm presenting presenting this to you for your consideration. I also have a resolution to hold a public hearing on your agenda for the 6:30 meeting tonight. Due to some scheduling delays, I have a Brownfield conference in in August. I'm not going to be available by the time this would come back to this board. So there's a little bit of time between when we're asking you to set the public hearing to when we are requesting the public hearing, and so we're requesting that happen on August 19th. And then immediately following the public hearing, we we request that you consider adopting a resolution, well, supporting a resolution to adopt the plan officially. And that's all I have for you today. So if there's no immediate questions for me, I'd love to go ahead and bring up Jim Vandenberg as well to discuss.
Commissioner Kissler.
I won't, don't worry.
Yes, would you, for my edification, if no one else is, explain why functionally obsolete now qualifies for a Brownfield redevelopment project?
Well.
It used to be you had to have a gas tank under an old gas station or me, that'd be toxic.
Well, well, technically functionally obsolete, I'm not sure when it was added to the statute, but it has been something since I've been here that has been included in the statute. The more recent additions have been some housing. You know, you probably do. I'm in my mid-30s, so you know, I'll give it to you. So functionally obsolete is just one of those ways that, you know, we can get a determination done on a piece of property where a certified assessor will come in and say, this building can no longer be used for its intended original development use. And so this is one of those cases where we get to reduce sprawl. So once we get that determination from the assessor, then we know it can no longer be used for what it is. You maybe want to consider either a rezoning determination, something like that, but ultimately it is then approved to be able to be used as a brownfield property, even if it's not contaminated. This one, of course, had lead line walls, so that was, it had its own thing going with it. But yeah, so once we get that official determination, then it does qualify, and we can move forward with the redevelopment of the property.
Good, all right. Thank you. We can bring our partners forward.
Okay.
I'll come.
Thank you very much. Jim Vandenberg, Maple Hado Group. I can do a commercial for you if you'd like right now, but I assume all of you are driving Subarus on these Volvos and all that. The property is very exciting for us. If you've ever been on our property, we have six brands on five and a half acres, and we are stuffed. We've said for a while that we've been 10 pounds in a five-pound bag. We're probably closer to 20 pounds in a five-pound bag. And so this is a big welcome to us to move into an 11-acre site on top of our 5.5. So altogether, it gives us about 15, 16 and a half acres of land. This property is special from, if you're familiar with it, you know, a lot of green land around it, a nice, beautiful piece of property. Marty Hodges and the Hodges Group sold off the front property to us. The back he is maintaining. It's doing other functions outside of the brownfield. By doing this transaction, it was agreed that we would allow road access from Seco Drive, which comes off of Ninth Street and goes into Seco Drive, which then will be a penetrator line into the development that will be to my east, which is open land right now. But I think it's been publicly put out as developmental into high-density housing, light commercial, light retail in that section. So this helps facilitate that. I know that the plans are going through the Kalamazoo County Road Commission on that issue. We are trying to make this something special within the U.S. as far as what Subaru dealerships do, and with our Subaru customers, some of the, you know, unique things that we think we're bringing to it is our waiting room will be both inside and outside, and the outside will have fireplaces outside. That space is going to include kitchen, kitchenettes, and bathrooms, and the meeting space. The meeting space is then designed so that we can lock the building up and then turn over that space and inside-outside space to local charities for events, meetings, whatever they may be, free of charge, you know, coming into the building. So that's one thing. Two, we're going to have dog walks there, modern facilities that wash and clean most of the waste that goes through there. As you said, or as we mentioned, we have about 130-plus employees right now on the main campus. This will add another almost 40 people down the road. Plus, we figure that it will be another 30 people on top of that within the next five years that will be there. So we should be pushing about 200 employees from the current 130, 140 range where we are right now. Bike pass, I mean, walking pass on there. Marty Hodges in the back. We've talked about having a joint paths between there that would also join up with the, I guess it's a sidewalk or walking path that's in front of the dealership along West Main, but then it would also join up with the new road in the back and would be able to be community walkways. We see it for our customers that if they're in waiting and they want to do a little exercise, you map it out, and it's just over a mile walking around the properties. We hope to have our retention ponds, more than retention ponds. We hope that they're, you know, visible, aerated, you know, sustainable facilities. So again, we're trying to be unique. Everything is energy efficient, as we've mentioned, you know, everything LED, but we also are looking at things like geothermal energy versus going with forced air, geothermal, reusing the heating and cooling from the ground itself, a little bit more expensive upfront, but it it really uses minimal amount of energy. So again, those are some of the things that we're trying to do to make it a unique property, a beautiful property, as far as, I know, some people don't like car dealerships. I I've never understood that, but, you know, I think we're wonderful people. But so we are trying to do a little bit of everything in all buckets, try to make this a unique and prosperous for all people, Ashtemo Township, the township, the county itself. And, you know, everybody's been a great help with this. Macy's done an incredible job helping us get through the brownfield section. So I'll take any questions if anybody has any.
Thank you so much. Number of exciting components to this development in general, and it is a beautiful space there. So I frequent that part of the community often. I look forward to watching this emerge. Are we questions for commissioners? Place your.
I actually have a question for you, Macy. I'm all in support of the project. I think this is a great, great idea. I think it's a great use of brownfield. It's kind of a off-topic question. As we deal with youth sports center in that corridor and West Main, mostly on the other side of 131, if there is a brownfield plan and then there needs to be a corridor improvement, if we, you know, alter our our TIF policy within that, and there needs to be a corridor improvement, does that affect any other existing brownfields?
So usually if the, well, so the brownfields will continue to capture what they've always been capturing, but traditionally, if the special assessment district or the authority, the corridor authority's been put in first, then we do ask that they consider, you know, sharing a portion of their TIF. I would have to go back to look at statute just to double check that there's not a formal request that should be made once an assessment district's been made on an active plan. But I haven't seen it happen yet, so I believe we'll still continue to capture. And then, you know, I guess if there's a special request to come in, it's something that we would definitely have to double check statute to see if we would be allowed to forego capture, because that would definitely impact the full metrics of the plan as the plan is written in the beginning. And we do our best to estimate things conservatively, and we like to avoid like returns of taxing jurisdiction dollars if it impacts the metrics of the plan. So we'd have to look into it legally just to double check.
And that makes sense, and I don't anticipate that that would even, that that's so far west, 131, I don't even anticipate that that would even be a part of any sort of future, but I'm just curious. Thank you.
Of course.
All right, seeing no other questions, thank you both. Congratulations. All right. So move to the first reading, a resolution to establish the ad hoc committee per the purpose of the senior millage allocations. My detail to reopen here for us. Here we go. Thank you. Okay. Sorry, thank you, just loading that up. So ad hoc committee, it's resolution 2025733, just first reading this evening. Similar to the process we went through last year, we'll establish an ad hoc. We have commissioners who have expressed a willingness for participation. It's Commissioner Mazer and Commissioner Kissler. Once that task is done, the committee will be dissolved, so they'll review funding requests under the senior millage, springing in a .3462 mills to serve Kalamazoo County seniors and older adults. Place your.
Yeah, why are we, I guess this might be a, maybe it's a little question, or maybe it's, why are we doing an ad hoc committee and then dissolving it and then reestablishing it every year? Is, would it be simpler just to have a standing committee, or is that?
Counsel.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd have to look into that. That's just how you've always done it, and everybody knows that's how you cook a roast. So, but I can definitely look into and ask, get you an answer for that question.
Yeah, may save us a little bit of time next year.
Thank you for that suggestion. I know last year was the first cycle we went through this approach, so as we have commissioners that dig in and get versed in the process, leave that committee standing. They'll only meet for a short period each year. Commissioner Kissler?
Yeah, I look forward to finding out the difference between a committee and a subcommittee and an ad hoc committee, because it's, I sat in that same room for all three of those at one point, and it seems like there's very little difference. Must be something under loose domain that it's a legal thing. I look forward to finding out what that is, but please put it in words I can understand.
Thanks, just that ad hoc committee like officially dissolves in water when it's done with its effort. All right, thank you for that. All right. Myself back to the agenda. Okay, closed session. We have none before us this evening. So with nothing else before us, for committee of the whole, we are adjourned. So with nothing else before us, per committee of the whole, we are adjourned.